I call the February 11th meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And welcome, everybody here. Our invocation tonight will be given by our own Councilman Bill Moody. I'll ask my colleagues to stand for the invocation. Then after the invocation, I'll ask everybody to stand as Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, your word tells us to everything there is a season and a time for every purpose under heaven. Lord, we pray as we come together to do the business of our city. Let our purpose be to make our city a better place. And our season on this dais, however long or brief, be a time in which our purpose was to make a positive contribution to our city. Lord, we pray that your peace will be in our hearts, that your grace will be in our words as we conduct the city's business tonight. For it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is a roll call vote, and we'll do that electronically. Please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, do we not? Thank you. Our next item is a consideration of the adoption and approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of January the 27th, 2020; the minutes of a call meeting of January the 28th, 2020; and we have the minutes of a regular meeting of January 28th, 2020. And we'll consider the adoption of these minutes all together in one motion. Is there such?
Move for adoption. Sir, second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience. It should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our first item of business is actually a public hearing, and this is a public hearing on a zoning application. Our protocol is that I'll ask, once the clerk reads the caption, I'll ask the applicant to come to the lectern to explain the application. The applicant will have 10 minutes. Then after that, I'll call upon the city manager, and she will call upon the Assistant City Manager, Director of Planning, to give the status of the application, and then we'll open up the public hearing. You don't need to be signed up to speak at the public hearing. When the public hearing is open, and if you desire to speak at the public hearing, please come to the lectern, and you'll be given five minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. UP 1917, Parkview, Elaine F. Harris requests a use permit for a duplex located at 1038 Crawford Parkway. The property is owned historic residential and contains a single-family detached dwelling. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map designates this area for mixed residential development. The property is owned by Elaine F. Harris. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present tonight? Yes. Would you come to the lectern? You'll have 10 minutes to explain the application. Please identify yourself.
My name is Adan Ramos. I'm representing Ms. Elaine Harris. She wants her house back as a duplex, watches from the factory, and she wants to legally, she wants her house duplex, I mean, two-family house, legally.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Robert Baldwin will come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of council. As has been presented before you, this is a request for a use permit to convert this existing structure to a duplex. As I mentioned during work session, this house had been a duplex before, had been converted back to a single-family, and the owner now would like to put it back into the duplex situation it was in before. This application went before the Planning Commission both in December and in January. The Planning Commission carried over the applicant at the time. Could not attend the Planning Commission meeting in December due to some health issues. They conducted public hearings at both meetings, and by vote of six to zero in December the 7th, Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to five conditions, and those are incorporated into the materials you've been provided with the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. With that, we're ready for the public hearing, and this is on a use permit application. And would you read the caption again, just to make sure everybody understands?
UP 1917, Parkview, Elaine F. Harris requests a use permit for a duplex located at 1038 Crawford Parkway. The property is owned historic residential and contains a single-family detached dwelling. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map designates this area for mixed residential development. The property is owned by Elaine F. Harris. Planning Commission recommends approval. Electronic roll call.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I will now open the public hearing. If you desire to come and speak either for or against this zoning application, please come to the lectern. You'll have five minutes. Does anybody want to speak for or against this application? Please identify yourself, and you'll have five minutes. Yes, sir.
The gentleman would care to speak again, and if you wouldn't mind, I can translate for him so he could more clearly communicate what he had to say.
That's fine.
Okay.
But you'll have five minutes.
Five minutes.
Adan Ramos.
His name is Adan Ramos?
He's the representative of Ms. Elaine Harris.
She's putting forth a petition for a, have to have a duplex as it was before. She wants to have everything legal and be able to provide the economic opportunity to also make a rent.
Yes.
This is fifteen? And at least she would like the house in the back or the back structure as it is detached to be able to be rented out. Yep, and that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other person who wants to speak either for or against this zoning application? If you do, please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Any additional speakers? With that, I declare this public hearing closed so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration on first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a motion on the floor. It's been duly seconded. We're ready for our discussion. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to the applicant or the applicant's representative, and that question would be, are there any new construction or alterations to the building?
If the applicant would come back to the lectern, and both gentlemen, please. Do you understand Councilman Moody's question? Okay. We'll give you a moment to translate.
And the reason I asked that, I stated that question from a helpful standpoint because it is a historic district, and we have a Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
But it sounds like it doesn't apply. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion on the motion? Y'all may be seated. Thank you. Ready for the question? We'll vote electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 20-55, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $117,307.50 of Community Development Block Grant Program income and $20,000 of Home Investment Partnership Program income, and appropriating said amounts in the FY 2020 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, there's a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 20-56, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting Commonwealth Development Opportunity Funding in the amount of $180,000 from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for distribution in accordance with state guidelines and in furtherance of the development of the former BASF site by Lineage Logistics.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready for a consideration of the question. We'll do the vote electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Item 20-57, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article 17 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia regarding the Clean Community Commission by modifying Section 2-803 to remove references to obsolete staff positions.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 20-58, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to modify the appropriation made by Ordinance 2019-106, adopted on December 10th, 2019, by reducing the appropriation to the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget by the amount of $101,543, excuse me, $543 in accordance with the request of the Portsmouth School Board.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're now at the consideration of item 20-59, which is another ordinance for our consideration to adopt. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to, one, accept grant funding from the Virginia Department of Education in the amount of $255,652, and appropriate said sum in the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget; and, two, authorize the transfer of $42,410 from the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget to the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget to serve as the required local match for the said grant.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? We'll vote electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 20-60, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that ordinance, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article 1 of Chapter 6 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth regarding the regulation of vessels in the North Harbor and High Street Inlet and along the Portsmouth Seawall by amending Section 6-7 to clarify that the mooring of certain vehicles, vessels, used for the operation of a public ferry service is permitted.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
I would like to make a motion to table this in reference to getting more information as we heard tonight from HRT and their operating partners.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion to table, there is no discussion, so we'll vote on the motion to table. We'll do that electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And the motion carries, and this matter is tabled.
Okay.
It's tabled to the next meeting. Which brings us to item 20-61, which is the consideration of a resolution, a certain resolution. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution?
Yes, sir. 61, okay. A resolution authorizing the amendment of an agreement with the Transportation District of Hampton Roads doing business as Hampton Roads Transit regarding the use of the High Street Pier and the North Landing for a public ferry service.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion of this motion. Any discussion? We're ready to vote. We'll vote electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're down to item 20-62, which is the adoption of a resolution, a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the Virginia Electric and Power Company, having a width of 15 feet across certain property located in the Holy Neck Borough of Suffolk.
Is, so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Amen.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, which is to adopt the resolution. It's been seconded. We're ready for discussion. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
I have a question, Mayor. Is that the Virginia Electric and Power Company? I haven't heard that term in a number of years. Is that the same as Dominion Energy?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's how the easement is. That's how the easement is probably recorded.
That's how.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, and we'll vote electronically. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us now to new business, item 20-63, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
None to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Item 20-64, items submitted by council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of upcoming events in the city before we meet again. First, next Tuesday, a week from tonight, the 18th of February, we will hold our first community meeting of the new year. That will be at Norcom High School, and that will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'll have an update, a couple of presentations, an update on the recent City Council retreat that was held last weekend, an economic development update, and then, of course, we will be there to listen to the citizens. And that, of course, is free and open to the public. We have ongoing activities in the month for Black History Month all over the city. We have a Census 2020 Awareness Town Hall meeting on Thursday, February 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Portsmouth Social Services Office. We want to make sure everybody is aware, now that it seems like everybody has a cellphone, there is a new app for your cellphone to learn about agendas, to get information on the city, very much like the website, but interactive, and it's called Portsmouth Connect, and it's on your Android and iPhone devices. And then for those who are, like me, over 60, we have AARP Tax Prep Assistance that's offered at the Churchland Branch of the Portsmouth Public Library, Monday through Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., now through Wednesday, April the 15th. So if you want help with your taxes, their tax aid is available free to taxpayers with low to moderate income, with special attention to individuals over 60. And that's Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Churchland Branch Library, now through Tax Day.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of Black History Month, I would like to update you on some information relative to black history. Everyone knows Mae Breckenridge Hayward, is retired librarian and president of the American Historical Society, and it was brought to our attention that she visited an exhibit, the Virginia Museum of History and Culture, and that exhibit is labeled "Determined." The 400 Year Struggle for Black Equality is the theme of the exhibit that's been running since last year in June, and it runs through March of this year. And in that exhibit, you can expect to find history that has been before us, that has been put on the back burner about African-American history. It's history that includes life of enslaved African-Americans before and after the Civil War, shows a group of people's struggle for equality and how they survived through colored schools, colored restrooms, colored churches, colored cemeteries, and notable articles in the newspaper like colored notes that were written by Jeffrey T. Wilson, who is a Portsmouth native. And of course, Jeffrey T. Wilson wrote those notes during the period, August 1924 through March 1929. And of course, his artifacts can be found in this exhibit at the Cultural, the Virginia Museum of History and Cultural Arts. And actually, they will be taking a bus trip up on March 7th, so if anyone is interested. The African-American Historical Society will be conducting, doing a bus trip. It's only $45 if you're interested in seeing that exhibit. You can get in touch with anyone from the African-American Historical Society. Of course, that trip will be on a Saturday, March 7th. They would depart from Elm Avenue in Portsmouth and return that same day. So if you're interested, contact the African-American Historical Society and learn more about Jeffrey T. Wilson and his artifacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a Black History Moment in Portsmouth.
And that was, the paper that you made reference to was the Portsmouth paper.
Yes, the Portsmouth Star.
Yes.
Yes.
I, thank you so much for that great report. Dr. Patton, you pass for the floor.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I think it's noteworthy that all of the colored notes, the rights to them were purchased by Virginia Tech University. So all of the colored notes written by Jeffrey Wilson, those rights are held by Virginia Tech University in Blacksburg.
Good. Good. Thank you. Report on pending items, item 20-65. Dr. Patton.
There are no pending items, Mayor, and members of council.
We come to non-agenda speakers, and may I ask the clerk to read the protocol again,
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of the City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a list of speakers that, and if you have signed up, you know that you have to state what you're going to speak on. The last sentence or so in our council rule says that we listen to things which we can influence. I've had a member of council ask how we can influence nuclear disarmament. So we are very respectful of everyone's First Amendment rights, but please, if you can make your comments on this matter to something that falls within the purview of the Portsmouth City Council. With that, our first speaker is Julia Dorsey-Loomis, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of City Council. My name is Julia Dorsey-Loomis. I'm a Portsmouth native, an Episcopal priest, and a grandmother. I'm also a member of the Hampton Roads chapter of the International Campaign for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons called ICANN. My colleagues and I want to speak to you about an all-encompassing threat to our planet, a threat to young and old, rich and poor, black, white, Latino, native, everyone, and every creature, the air, the waters, the earth. This is about our children's and grandchildren's future. I want to speak urgently to you because you can help. You can make a difference as the City Council of Portsmouth on behalf of the people of Portsmouth. And my colleagues will be unfolding this. We want to give you the background information for what is called the Cities Appeal. On August 9th, 1945, the day I was born, the people of Nagasaki, Japan, were going about their daily lives. were going about their daily lives, getting ready for school or work, visiting with a neighbor. Suddenly, their lives were snatched from them. When the U.S. dropped its nuclear bomb on Nagasaki, those at Ground Zero died unspeakable deaths. Others suffered the ravages of cancer over the course of many years. This must never, ever happen again. The world is closer to nuclear war right now than at any other time since World War II. The Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, a group comprising fourteen Nobel laureates in science, economics, and political affairs, has set its doomsday clock at one hundred seconds to midnight. Here's why. Right now, the world has fifteen thousand nuclear weapons. Eighteen hundred are on hair-trigger alert, ready to use on short notice. Tensions are higher than at any other time since the end of the Cold War, among states and within regions where nuclear weapons are ready for instant use, the U.S., Russia, and Europe, India and Pakistan, the Korean Peninsula, and the Middle East, now in dire crisis. Leaders of these states are unstable. Arms control agreements are being ripped up. Heightening the danger are hackers and cyber warriors constantly at work to infiltrate military computer systems. Several nuclear facilities have been shown to have inadequate security systems. As recently as 2018, seven religious protesters breached security at the Kings Bay Trident Submarine Base in southern Georgia. Failures in human judgment compound the risk of accidental or unauthorized use of nuclear weapons. As missiles become supersonic and harder to detect, the response time leaders have to make decisions about firing nuclear weapons is ever shorter. In spite of this global threat, the world is seeing a new arms race. All nine nuclear states are upgrading or adding new warheads and delivery systems to enhance the accuracy and destructive capacity of existing weapons. In 2017, the Congressional Budget Office estimated the thirty-year cost of America's nuclear forces to be one point two trillion dollars. A few blocks away from us at the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, several of the submarines of the Trident Fleet have recently been overhauled, ready to take on their nuclear payload. Each Trident submarine can carry the explosive power of one thousand eight hundred twenty-five Hiroshima bombs. I know this is chilling information, but take heart. We can change direction. We can live a better way. The Psalms remind us to put our trust not in horses and chariots, which today would be not in bombs and missiles, but in the one who has given all peoples and nations the gift of life. Together, we can help bring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s vision of the beloved community into a noble and gracious reality. My colleagues will show further how this City Council can act to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Fay Bailey.
And again, I'll remind you of our council rules. Please speak to issues that we can have an influence on.
We hope we'll show you that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Fay Bailey. I also live in Portsmouth. My professional life has been working in the arts or not-for-profit organizations, everybody from the opera to the zoo, all seeking to enhance quality of life for our citizens. Several months ago, members of our group left copies of the 2017 United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons in your boxes. This treaty outlaw, outlaws the development, manufacture, possession, testing, use, or threat of use of nuclear weapons. It also prohibits assisting other states with their nuclear weapons programs. One hundred and twenty-two member nations of the United Nations approved the treaty on July seventh, 2017. For bringing the treaty to fruition, ICANN, the International Campaign for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons, received the 2017 Nobel Peace Prize. One of the two women who accepted this prize on behalf of ICANN was Setsuko Thurlo. Thurlo told her story of being thirteen years old when the atom bomb fell on her hometown of Hiroshima, Japan. This excerpt from her acceptance speech picks up after she crawled out of the rubble of her burning school. Quote, "As I crawled out, the ruins were on fire. Most of my classmates in the building were burned to death alive. I saw all around me utter unimaginable devastation, processions of ghostly figures shuffled by, grotesquely wounded people. They were bleeding, burnt, blackened, and swollen. Parts of their bodies were missing. Flesh and skin hung from their bones, and some with their eyeballs hanging in their hands, some with their bellies burst open, their intestines hanging out. The foul stench of burnt human flesh filled the air. Thus, with one bomb, my beloved city was obliterated. Most of its citizens were civilians, who were incinerated, vaporized, carbonized, among them, members of my own family and three hundred and fifty-one of my schoolmates. In the weeks, months, and years that followed, many thousands more would die, often in random and mysterious ways from the delayed effects of radiation. Still to this day, radiation is killing survivors. Whenever I remember Hiroshima, the first image that comes to mind is of my four-year-old nephew. His little body transformed into an unrecognizable melted chunk of flesh. He kept begging for water in a faint voice until his death released him from agony. To me, he came to represent all the innocent children of the world, threatened as they are at this very moment by nuclear weapons. Every second of every day, nuclear weapons endanger everyone we love and everything we hold dear, and we must not tolerate this insanity any longer." Thank you.
Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bailey. Okay. Mayor, what I'm going to ask is, I still haven't heard how this council can disarm our nation's nuclear weapons. And that was going to be my question to you, Ms. Bailey.
Well, the question and answer is coming. We have two more people who are going to add some information, but they won't tell you exactly what you could do, that so many other cities are doing the world. So, as you listen.
Our next speaker is George William Thompson III, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I reside in the City of Portsmouth. I was honorably discharged from the U.S. Army in 1974. I served as a probation counselor for the City of Portsmouth for four years, and I retired from Old Dominion University after thirty-six years as director of the Center for Major Exploration, which served students who were undecided about their major. I'm currently, I currently serve as an associate minister at Zion Baptist Church under the pastor of Dr. Kelvin Turner. I too am a father and grandfather. Genesis one twenty-six says, "And God said, 'Let us make humankind in our image, according to our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the birds of the air, and over cattle, and over the wild animals of the earth, and over every creeping thing that creeps upon earth.'" God gave us dominion, but with the threat of nuclear disaster, that dominion is threatened. To date, thirty-five members of, thirty-five member nations have signed and ratified the U.N. Treaty, including ex-nuclear weapons states South Africa and Kazakhstan. The Holy See under the leadership of Pope Francis was the first to ratify. Once fifty nations have ratified the U.N. Treaty, nuclear weapons will be the final weapons of mass destructions to be outlawed internationally. Already banned are chemical weapons, biological weapons, landmines, and cluster munitions. Asking the government to sign this treaty isn't asking it to disarm unilaterally. Signing the first, signing the first step expresses the political will to disarm. Then the work will turn to convincing the other nuclear states to decide likewise. Then a timetable for the concurrent dismantling of warheads by all parties would be agreed upon. Finally, the nations would all ratify the treaty and begin to implement the plan. This is how the INF and START treaties between the U.S. and Russia brought world stockpiles from seventy thousand nuclear weapons in the 1980s down to fifteen thousand today. What would be the reason not to put extraordinary effort into trying this? Because the U.S. and several other nuclear armed nations have not yet signed the treaty. ICANN is working around the globe to put grassroots pressures on these non-signatory governments. It's asking town and city councils everywhere to pass the City's Appeal. Here is the ICANN City's Appeal that we are asking you to approve. It reads, "Our city is deeply concerned about the grave threat that nuclear weapons pose to communities throughout the world. We firmly believe that our residents have the right to live in a world free from this threat. Any use of nuclear weapons, whether deliberate or accidental, would have catastrophic, far-reaching, and long-lasting consequences for people and the environment. Therefore, we support the adoption of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons by the United Nations in 2017. We call on our national government to join it. From many perspectives, supporting the treaty is the right thing to do. Nuclear weapons pose a particular threat to cities. Hampton Roads, the most militarized place in the Western Hemisphere, is high on the target list of nuclear armed adversaries. The personal skills and the trillions of dollars spent to design, produce, test, and store nuclear weapons could be diverted to making communities stronger and healthier by providing environmental protection, education, health care, the beautification of public spaces, and the refurbishing of infrastructure. We human beings are called to be stewards, not destroyers of the earth. An exchange of less than one percent of the world's nuclear weapons would disrupt the global climate and threaten two billion people with starvation. A major nuclear war would kill hundreds of millions of people and bring about nuclear winter, destroying the ecosystems on which we, all life depends. City Council, we are asking you tonight to do the right thing. Put our city at the forefront of a worldwide movement to preserve the earth and its inhabitants. Support the City's Appeal." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is David Loomis, and sir, you have five minutes.
Members of Portsmouth City Council, my name is David Loomis. I have been a Portsmouth resident since 1979. After thirty-two years of teaching in the Department of Philosophy and Religious Studies at Old Dominion University, I retired. Tonight, as a member of ICANN, I will be reading the statement of a Norfolk ICANN member, Captain Neil Walsh, who was unable to attend tonight because of poor health. Here is Captain Walsh's statement. "My name is Neil Walsh, captain, U.S.N., retired. I have lived in Norfolk since 1977, at thirteen-sixty-seven Cornwall Place, continuously now since 1998. I served in the Marine Force for thirty years and was commanding officer of the USS Michigan, a Trident nuclear ballistic missile submarine. As such, we were part of the Strategic Nuclear Deterrence Triad under the doctrine of MAD, mutually assured destruction. Strategically, as an arm of the Department of Defense, our role was to discourage and deter any nuclear attack on the U.S. or our allies by remaining in an undetected-ready I trained all the young men on board on our job of deterrence, and that firing missiles would mean we had failed. The goal was not to participate in nuclear warfare, but to deter it. Now there is a better way. Signing the treaty would be a step towards freeing the world's military members from involvement in global genocide and global suicide. No human being should be burdened with such responsibility. The United States, after seventy-four years leading the world in development of nuclear weapons, is in the best position to now lead the world to sign, ratify, and enact the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. The treaty could be a framework for complete, verifiable, global nuclear disarmament. Cities that have passed the ICANN City's Appeal include Washington, D.C., and Paris, both capital of nuclear weapons states, Edinburgh, the capital of Scotland, and home to British nuclear weapons, Berlin, Munich, and Nuremberg, Germany, a host nation to NATO nuclear weapons, Los Angeles, Baltimore, Salt Lake City, and Manchester, England, Honolulu, excuse me, Honolulu and Anchorage, Toronto, Melbourne, Sydney, and Oslo. The state of California, the only state that receives more defense dollars than Virginia, and home to thirty-two military bases and scores of defense contractors, including Lawrence Livermore Nuclear Weapons Laboratory, along with New Jersey and Oregon, have passed resolutions asking the government to sign the treaty. As ICANN President Beatrice Films said while accepting the Nobel Peace Prize, quote, "The story of nuclear weapons will have an ending, and it is up to us what that ending will be. Will it be the end of nuclear weapons, or will it be the end of us? We must choose one." Unquote. "We ask Portsmouth City Council to pass the ICANN City's Appeal and join the surging global chorus choosing a world free from the threat of nuclear annihilation." Unquote. That's the end of Captain Walsh's statement to this council. In an email to our ICANN chapter yesterday, he wrote this, quote, "I pray all goes well, and some hearts and minds are willing to move from mutually assured destruction to mutually interdependent survival." Unquote. In closing, speaking for myself, I urge this council to study the ICANN City's Appeal and put it on your next meeting agenda, and put Portsmouth on the map as the first Hampton Road city to endorse the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. I want to thank you for your attention, and if there are other members of ICANN here this evening, please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Tom Miano, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Tom Miano, and I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Portsmouth. I'm the former owner of Scat Bike Shop here in Portsmouth for over twenty-one years. What does it take for the City of Portsmouth to paint some simple bike logos halfway down High Street to the Chesapeake City Line, on both sides of High Street, including the Churchill Land Bridge? In the last six months, I've contacted the city manager's office twice, the city engineer's office twice, general services office, a city, I've spoken to a city council member twice, who has promised to get back with me and address this body three months ago. I addressed this body three months ago. I gave my name to the city manager's assistant at that meeting, with the assurance that he gave me they were going to do a study and would get back with me within a week. No answers from anybody. What kind of study is possible or necessary to paint a dozen bike logos on the street? How much is this study costing? Why would the city not want more safety features for cyclists on our streets? Why would the city not encourage more people to bike ride and cut down on pollution? Why would the city not want people to live a healthier life? I am confident the city attorney will confirm that any roads, except for interstates in the Commonwealth of Virginia, may be used by cyclists unless otherwise posted. I am confident the city, the city attorney will state that bike logos have no extra legal effect, that their only purpose is to educate motorists that cyclists are, in fact, allowed to use the road, something many motorists are not aware of. By my calculations, it takes less than a gallon of paint, a stencil, and two hours for a city employee to paint a dozen logos for the safety of all people, both to prevent the cyclists who will be physically injured. the cyclists, who will be physically injured, and the motorists, who will be economically injured when they hit someone. Again, bike logos are only a reminder to motorists that cyclists are allowed to be on the road. Please paint some bike logos on High Street. I'll take any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Without, to my colleagues, without any objections, we'll direct the City Manager to treat this as a pending item to report back on this matter at the next council meeting. Without objection? Okay. This completes our agenda for the night. Thank you to everybody that attended, and this meeting is adjourned.